Hi Sean.
Hey, how are you?
Hi Michael.
Hello.
Guido.
Hello.
Bruce, David.
Yeah.
Same. Jude.
So, Happy St. Patrick's Day. It's a Coca-Cola, right?
Very good, very good.
It's an Irish Coca-Cola, yeah.
Okay.
I just, I just put out a corned beef and cabbage specialty and anyway, nothing, nothing like a Guinness every once in a while.
Nice.
There you go, there you go. We've got one, two, three, four, five, yep, all five commissioners are here.
Okay, alright.
Actually, let me ask Sean, Sean is your 253 St. Francis, is your architect here?
Uh, yes, he is, he's here. Nick, Nick Cristioni.
Okay. And then your applicants here, Sean?
I believe so, I think Nick can speak to that, I can't see their name, one second.
Yes, we are, hi.
Okay.
Yes, Toby Long, Stephen Boick and Brooke Boick. Steve Boick.
Yeah.
Bruce Boick, yeah.
He's the property owner? Alright Chair Ma, we have the architect and the property owner for the only item on the agenda tonight, so, and we have full full quorum, so we're ready.
Alright, okay. Thank you Guido. Alright, good evening. Welcome to Design Review Commission meeting, today is Wednesday, March 17. We have one on the discussion item, the first one, 370 Yoba Center has been drop off from the, the agenda. So, I would like to call the meeting to order and I would like to roll call in order, well, from what I seen on my screen, Commissioner Harding.
Here.
Commissioner Kirk.
Here.
Commissioner Blockus.
Here.
And Commissioner Bishop.
Here.
Okay, good, including myself, we have five out of five, so we have established a quorum. Is there any, if there's any audience, member audience would like to bring the their, their items on the, to the commissioners' attention, please raise your hand to, to the city staff and the city staff will arrange your time to speak. We can go on and proceed to the consent calendar, which is the Design Review Commissioner meeting from last week. March 3. Before, can, can, can the, all the people mute their, the speaker? Microphone? Yes, thank you, yeah. Alright, so, may I have, yeah, to have a motion to approve the minute?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second, anyone?
All second.
Right, I'm gonna roll call Commissioner Kirk.
Hi.
Commissioner Bishop.
Hi.
Commissioner Harding.
Hi.
Commissioner Blockus.
Hi.
Myself, I, motion approved, 520. Move on to discussion. For, item number SC200019, for 253 Francis Drive. Can I have the staff make the presentation, Sean?
One second, sorry. There we go. Good evening Chair Ma, my name is Sean Gagos, I am with, I'm associate planner with a good evening Chair Ma, my name is Sean Gagos, I am with associate planner with the planning division, the project before you, the designer view application for a new two-story, single-family house. The project includes 2,640 square feet at the first story and 1,343 square feet at the second story. The subject property is located on the north side of Francis Drive between Eleanor Avenue and Gordon Way. The neighborhood is considered to be a transitional character neighborhood as defined the city's residential design guidelines. Transitional neighborhoods are typically those that are in the process of changing their character and identity. Homes in the immediate neighborhood context are primarily one-story ranch-style homes with similar low-scale wall plate heights. There are also four-story homes built during varying time periods with varying architectural styles. This before you is a rendering of the, of the house from the final elevation, which is along the right side and the rear elevation on the left side, this is provided to you in your packet. The development does meet the development standards for the R110 zoning district, which includes items such as setback, daylight plane, height, etc. The new residence does use a contemporary architectural style with shed roof elements and simple, modern forms. The series of shed roof forms result in a more layered appearance and a structure that is well-articulated, which helps to break up the horizontal and vertical massing. A covered porch is proposed, partially covered porch is proposed on the front. The house is consistent with the identifying features of a contemporary with modern, modern-style eclectic design that includes the low-sloped roofs, large aluminum-framed windows, horizontal cedar and fiber cement board and stucco siding services and, and unornamental wall services with no decorative detailing at the doors or windows. The placement of the second story helps mitigate the impacts of the proposed height and bulk as viewed from the street. The overall, the overall scale and bulk is broken up with multiple shed forms, horizontal eve lines. The second story is softened due to being recessed into the roof form along the front and is centered along the sides of the structure. It does have lower plate heights and a larger second-story setback. On the left west elevation, let me see if it's, there we go. On the left west side elevation of the second story, there are two small fixed windows and two small windows are located in the master bedroom at four foot six inch sill heights and one large, one four-panel large clear-story window located with a 12-foot nine-inch sill height. Due to their placement and sill heights, staff does believe the windows do not create unreasonable privacy impacts. Along the right elevation, there are four windows proposed. There's one large window in the stairwell with a sill height of six feet from the stairwell landing. There's one window in the master bedroom and one in the master bath with two foot six sill heights. The windows are proposed to be casement windows with privacy glass and the windows are oriented to open towards the front to reduce privacy impacts on the side and rear yards. As proposed, staff believes the windows do not create unreasonable privacy impacts along the right elevation. On the rear north second-story elevation, there is one group of two windows located in the master bathroom with a two-foot sill height and one group of three windows in the living room with 12-foot nine-inch sill heights. Due to their substantial setbacks from the side and rear property lines with the proposed evergreen screening on the side and rear, staff does not believe the windows create unreasonable privacy impacts. The applicant has proposed to remove a liquid amber tree in the front yard, three liquid ambers and one maintenance tree in the right side yard, an avocado tree and six pitts of plum trees in the left side yard, due to being in poor condition or or conflicting with the house location. The applicant does propose to retain a 19.5-inch ginkgo, ginkgo tree, a 27.5-inch oak tree in the front yard, a 26.75-inch cork tree and a 27.5-inch cork tree in the rear yard. A comprehensive landscaping plan has been provided, it does incorporate a new Cherokee chief dogwood tree in rear yard and new front yard landscaping along the side and front yard and rear. This provides the detailed drawing of, on sheet 03, of the particulars, common, plant common names and sizes that are available to you in your, in your packet. This concludes staff's presentation, is there any questions, thank you.
Alright, thank you Sean. Any question from the commissioner for Sean, for the staff?
Done.
Okay. Alright, so, yeah, we don't have any question. Guido is, do we have anyone from the, the audience who would like to speak? I mean, sorry, no, we should have a probably owner or the architect would like to speak.
Yes, let me unmute them Chair Ma right now.
Okay.
Unmute. The owner Steve is there? Let me unmute.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, uh, this is Guido from the, the property owner and the architect have 10 minutes to give a presentation, so we pass it to you guys, so.
Okay, I'll start, I'm Brooke, I grew up here in Los Altos and my parents and grandfather are still local in Los Altos as well, so part of the reason that we chose the property was to be close to family, we have lots of family in the Bay Area. We have three young daughters and so we're excited to raise them in the Los Altos community and we're just, we're, this is our family home, we're gonna be here for a really long time.
Hi, and I'm Steve, so in addition to this being our family home, we want to bring our values to this. So in addition to working in the architecture industry for a while, my first job out of school, I was actually in the technology arm of Frank Gehry's Architecture Practice and after spending five years in architecture, I worked in urban planning for a couple of years and got to know a lot about sustainability and urban planning, I worked with the Columbia University's Earth Institute and the World Bank on some sustainability projects and so I want to bring that set of values to this project and so we're going above and beyond the Los Altos requirements and codes and we are proposing that we have no gas on the property at all, not just inside the house but nowhere on the property. We want to in fact generate all of the energy for the property using rooftop solar and respecting a system that we expect to generate nearly all of the demand from the rooftop and so that we want this home to be as much as possible off the grid, using as little as possible and hopefully making it better than it sounds.
Good.
And if Nick, the architect, if you wanted to also provide some context for the project?
Sure, could you actually unmute Toby?
I can unmute myself.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Sean, I don't know if there's a way, I don't know if there's a way for us to put up our submittal package or if we can go through a little bit of a slideshow.
Yeah, you can share, you can share your screen if you'd like to.
Ah, that is, I'm not fully prepared for that, yes, so let me do that very quickly and make sure that I've got the right documents in front of me, so I apologize. One second here. Is downloading, please, sorry, that is not something I'm prepared for. Commissioners, I will just kind of start here while I'm opening this up and I, and thank you so much for your ability this evening. We're glad everybody's up and running and the technology seems to be functioning smoothly, so your, your time, we know everybody spends a lot of time in Zoom land, so we're appreciative.
We're happy too.
Extensions into, into this evening, okay, so I am up and let me see if I can find, I want you to share my screen. Oh, here we go. Step one. This is that might be apologize, I'd not known that I was gonna be sharing. Try this one more time. Sorry, Ring is the one, the one system we don't, don't do a lot of.
Toby, to help you out, if you send your presentation on or I, we can pull it up for you.
Uh, yeah, I just was gonna pull up the drawing package that we had submitted, so I don't have a specific project, PowerPoint or anything and it's fairly large over, it's probably not emailable, so maybe we can just pull up, I don't know if it's possible to pull up the presentation that Sean had done, that's probably adequate. I was going to again kind of bounce through here, I apologize, did not realize that I was gonna be sharing my screen.
Sean, Sean, did you want to just pull up your, your slide deck of the?
Yes, and I do have the entire plan set, so if he needs to go through other sites beyond what I have, I can show him those.
Yeah, that might be great Sean, because I just wanted to go through the, just, there was a few notes that we had made in our little Axon drawings there that might be useful to just go through. Okay, I'm loading it there. Well, so let me just kind of jump in, I'll be brief, I think the project more or less speaks for itself, thank you again Commissioners for hearing us this evening. As Stephen and Brooke had represented, this is a long-term family home that we are designing with Stephen and Brooke. This home replaces an older home on the site, it's quite a lovely property. The existing house is a little tired and requires substantial renovation and certainly to access the values that Stephen and Brooke are hoping to bring to bear, we're proposing to remove the house and replace it with a new building. The home that we have designed for this site, as Sean represented, is about 3,400 square feet of living area with about 3,900 square feet, a little bit short of 4,000 square feet of total construction inclusive of the garage. As we might see from the front rendering, you can get a feel for a little bit of the character of the building that we're designing. We're excited by this articulated, modern design with some shed roofs in combination with some articulated volumes that we've tried to define using some of the material palette we're proposing for this project. The project consists of some wood siding, kind of of a light tone, which we're also gonna be using on the underside of the roof in the eve areas. We're gonna match this up with some fiber cement panels, probably from a high-quality company like Equitone as well as using a natural integral color stucco, which would complement the body of the building, bringing a very organic, light-colored palette to the exterior architecture for the project. We worked closely with staff upon our initial review to work through a variety of questions and comments that staff had for us. We were able to adjust our window design to account for some of the privacy concerns that had been addressed by staff. We articulated a little bit more of the front facade, creating some additional character for the building by improving the window design all from the exterior. We added a low-level roof and a covered porch helped break up the first-story massing. We added kind of this blotted wood wall at the entry to kind of introduce a texture and a bit of a theme that shows up in a couple areas around the house. And we were able to really bring to light a fun design for the project, which we believe met all of staff's concerns. We, from there, you know, have had a chance to meet with the neighborhood, we did a neighborhood meeting on the 27th of December of last year and were able to introduce the project to some of the neighbors, we understood some of their thoughts and concerns about the project and produced a number of documents within the set, this is a few sheets down to address some of those issues, in particular wanting to make sure that we were adequately addressing privacy as it related to the rear property. We want to bring to the board attention the very large hedgerow, which is at the back of the property, which we are not intending to remove or modify. And some of the views that it obscures from our second-story windows out towards the rear of the property. As, as Sean had represented, most of the vegetation of the property is remaining, there's some very important trees on this site, which we have tried to celebrate in the architecture, in particular, there's a large ginkgo tree at the front of this property, which we have been working closely with our arborist to make sure the building is adequately positioned away from the root structure and that the foundation will be excavated carefully, such that the tree is not harmed during the construction process. The construction itself, as Stephen represented, is intended to be quite progressive and to imbue modern values, not only with respect to our design of the energy systems, as well as the heating and cooling systems, the removal of gas as a function of any portion of this building. We're also gonna be constructing it off-site, happens to be my specialty, this is a, a, a very high-tech prefabricated building process that yields a much faster and higher-quality building process as well as a more rigorous building experience in a quality environment of the factory, allowing us to minimize disruption of the neighborhood and get this thing up to occupancy a little faster than we might be doing using more traditional building methods. The house is fairly straightforward in its overall layout, when we come in the front door, you've got kind of a large living room and some dining spaces adjacent. The kitchen faces towards the rear yard through this very transparent kind of glass wall, thanks for keeping up here, I appreciate that. There's a little bit of a guest room and a bedroom space, which is off to the west side of the property or the lower portion of the, of the page here. On the right side of the house, as from the front, or the east side of the property, we've accounted for a garage with some extra space for some toys and some trash cans. Leads into a mudroom space, kind of the back of the house, moving us towards the kitchen. On the second floor, which is, you know, obviously positioned well underneath the daylight plane requirements, we have a large open space, which is characteristic of a really dramatic kind of fun great room and then there are two additional bedrooms for the kids that are at the front of the house and a master bedroom, which is positioned towards the rear access from the top of the staircase. As you can see on our roof plan, we have allocated a pretty substantial amount of roof area to the solar array, in fact, what we're showing in our design review package is probably even a bit smaller than we've been coordinating with our mechanical engineers and the technical team. And I think as our elevations demonstrate, a few pages down, the project's been really intended to bring together a balanced composition of material, of tones, of forms and, and very deliberately underneath our proverbial building envelope, if you will, by several feet in most locations. Think as a quick presentation and rundown, that's what I wanted to kind of go through quickly, obviously we're available to help answer questions from the commission as, as necessary, but we look forward to working this project through to completion with the city and again, thank you guys for your time this evening.
Alright, thank you Mr. Long. Um, any question from commissioner for the architect?
No question.
Michael, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
So I'm, so I'm trying to understand, first, my question's regarding the ginkgo tree out front. The floor plan and the site plan show a relatively benign impact on the tree, but when I look at the overhanging second story and the roof plan, the, the house eats quite a bit into the canopy of the tree, which is not currently the situation, so I appreciate the attempt to save the tree, but I am concerned that that tree is not being set up for longevity. Could the architect tell me what the cantilever off the dining room is, looks like it's about eight feet or so? Correct? What's, what's the distance from the second-story cantilever to the face of the ginkgo tree?
Uh, Nick, I don't know if you want to pull that measurement, I think we can show you what the line of the second floor is above the dining room area and then the distance from that wall line to the face of the tree. I believe the distance to the face of the tree is probably about five to six feet at the second story and about 13, 12 feet probably from the ground floor, we'll, we'll confirm that for you.
So what percent, what percentage of that canopy is gonna be removed and if I'm looking at A1.2, it's just roughly a third of the tree is being removed?
Yeah, the arborist hasn't raised any concerns, we could study that more closely, the, the tree does have a, the, the fairly narrow canopy. We have not heard any concerns from working with our arborist about those conditions. The tree seems to be viable and they believe will, you know, be viable from the point of, of construction.
Well, I just reviewed the Michael Young's arborist report and he talks about root structure based on the, you know, tree protection zone is six times, but I don't think he's looking at the canopy impact in his report, so going forward, I, I, I think that's something of concern if the intent is to preserve the ginkgo.
Understood.
That, that's my only question, thank you.
Anyone else, any commissioner have a question for architect? Otherwise, I have, I have a couple of question. Can you point out, you mentioned this is gonna be, you know, all electric, no gas. As a matter of fact, all the new house, I believe from this year is gonna be all electric anyway. Where, where you, I don't see that on your plan, where are you gonna put the outside heat pump or AC units? Where are you going to put the outside heat pump or AC units? I'm just curious.
Commissioners, I don't know that we have fully identified that yet. I suspect that we would probably propose placing them, you know, my guess is behind the garage area or adjacent to the sideyard area behind the garage, which is a bit more of a utility portion of this project than the property area behind the low-level bedroom, which we've intended to build as a bit of a sideyard for the kids. There's a little swing set structure on that side of the project. So I think we will bring all of the utilities over to the east side of the house, where we've got the garage and the electric meter.
Okay, okay. And then my second question is that is the second floor in the front, from the front elevation, is the second floor cantilever above the ground floor at the front elevation?
It is partially correct. We also are showing that the line of the second floor is actually showing the line of the roof line, so the building is actually beyond the roof line by about two and a half feet. And so that cantilever is probably about three feet over the dining room window.
Okay, and that from the front elevation, the play height, I know it's a sloped roof. The lower play height is 10 feet, nine feet or 10 feet, right? What about the upper play height?
Eight feet.
No, the top plate, where does the, almost the ridge, the topmost plate in the front elevation?
From the front elevation, from the second floor to the roof is about 13 feet.
Okay, all right, so it's sloping up basically from, let's say, from the second floor, it's about nine feet on the lower to, you say 13?
Yeah, the top plate height around the perimeter of the second story is eight feet, and it slopes up to a maximum ridge height on the outside of the roof to a height of, well, another nine plus four, so 13 feet from the finished floor of the second floor to the ridge line at the center.
Got it, got it. Okay, all right. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. So Guido, do we have any speaker from the public?
I have a Bob Simmons. Let me see if he wants to talk. Bob, you've been unmuted. Do you want to speak on this item?
No, I was actually here for 370, and I came in late, so I don't know what happened.
The applicant withdrew the application.
Okay. Then I have no, I have no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it came at like 4:45 today, so.
Well, that's a surprise, so, okay, then I have nothing else to say.
Okay, all right, well then just stick around.
Thank you.
No problem. And who else? I've got Avija. Let me see if this person. Unmute, unmute. No, it's not letting me unmute this person. Avija, this is Guido from the city. Did you want to speak on this item?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, am I too loud?
No, you're good, you're good.
Okay, hi Guido. Thank you, first of all, Guido, for rescheduling this meeting, because I joined a couple of weeks ago, and I totally understand IT, because I seem to have a video problem, and so all you see is my audio, but I can see all of you guys. So anyway, I do have three quick things to say. I do believe, I live at 250 East, well, first of all, let me back up. My name is Avija Singh Tubasi, and my husband and my son have, and I have lived here at 250 East Edith Avenue for 11 years. We are located directly behind 253 Francis, and we, of course, welcome our new neighbors, Steve and Brooke Boeck and their lovely family. However, we do have three concerns about the proposed project. Number one, I've done a lot of research on prefab homes, and I do believe that they lower the property values. Currently, we have no prefab homes in our neighborhood, and we'd like to keep it that way. My home personally is valued at a $5 million range, and many of our homes in our neighborhood are valued the same, and some go all the way up to $10 million. When young families move into this high-priced neighborhood, I totally understand the predicament that they're in. It's really expensive to buy it, and then, you know, it needs a little bit of remodeling. This particular home, I knew the old owners, and they did do a huge gut job. They have high ceilings and whatnot. Now, I understand that that's not to Steve and Brooke's liking, but that's fine. So the, what I'd like to, the temptation for young families to move into this neighborhood, they can't afford to buy, to build a custom home, so it's really tempting to turn to the fast and cheap method, which would be prefab homes. It's quick, it's a lot cheaper than custom building, and once there's one prefab home in our neighborhood, it opens the door to like a rush of future prefab homes, because you can always, you know, point to the one home in your neighborhood and say, "Well, that was prefab, so why can't we do it?" So I believe that that effect would be downward pressure on existing home values in my neighborhood, and I'm concerned, because I have a custom home, and I'd like to keep the value of that property up. Number two is the look and feel of the proposed project, and I've looked at it. I don't believe it fits the neighborhood. It looks cheap. I don't think this is a styling issue. It's the nature of prefab homes and the fact that they're constructed off-site, and they must be transported often hundreds of miles away. So all those design features and materials have to be able to withstand transportation. Therefore, it limits the quality of features that can be incorporated in these homes. Number four is, I'm sorry, number three, and finally, and thank you for bearing with.
Excuse me, your time is up. Can you try to wrap up in the next 10 seconds?
The third point is actually the most important. I want to know what kind of control and oversight and accountability the City of Los Altos has on this project. I mean, what assurance do I have as the next-door homeowner that this is code-compliant, proper fire codes? I mean, I pay like very high property taxes, so that city staff can have that kind of oversight. But if everything's all, like the walls are all up and the electricity is all behind them and all the plumbing is behind them, I mean, so this is a question, how does the City of Los Altos have oversight and accountability for the inspection when it's all done?
All right, your time is up. Thank you, thank you, yeah.
I didn't know I had a time limit, but anyway.
Yes, each speaker has three minutes. Anyway, thank you. Point taken. Guido, anyone else would like to speak from the public?
Chair Ma, I believe everybody else is accounted for.
Okay.
Chair Ma, I'd love to reuse a little bit of our time and just offer a few thoughts in rebuttal, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, we'll take that into consideration. We'll leave some time for you for rebuttal, you know, when we finish the discussion among our commissioner. So who would like to speak first? Commissioner Plakas, would you like to go first?
Yeah, I like the project. It's interesting, the prefab route. I've seen a couple of properties come in that have been built that way, that look good, that don't diminish the value of the neighborhood, and I fully support it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bishop?
Can you hear me, Michael?
Sure.
Yeah. So like Dave, I would support the project. I think we'll see more of this type of construction going forward in time. And actually, some of this work that's built off-site is actually very high-quality. I think the design of the house is, from an energy perspective, they've done a good job with the solar siding on the house. And generally speaking, I think it's attractive. I'm not sure that it costs an awful lot less than actually building on-site. I mean, there are cheap modular homes. I don't believe this is one of them. So the project would have my support.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kurek?
Similar commentary. I don't think, just because this is being built in a prefabricated method, it has any indication of the quality of the construction and the design. It's more about speed and energy efficiency. So I commend the owner and the architect for undergoing this process. And to me, I live not too far from here and without being within the cone of recusal, but the street is quite eclectic, and it has other homes that are more contemporary, and I actually think this is quite in keeping with the neighborhood. So I think it'll be a great design once it's all done. My commentary is solely, first of all, I think it meets all the design guidelines in terms of privacy impacts and, you know, daylight plane and setback and all of that, but my main concern is the impact on the trees. The property has wonderful cork oaks that were amazing. I've never really seen cork oaks quite that dramatic. And once again, I commend the owner for preserving those. The ginkgo out front, I think that is a, I don't think you're being realistic. I think this house is going to kill that tree, and I don't, it might be complicated even more by the method of construction being prefabricated. I've seen prefabricated homes installed with cranes and lifting huge modules. So the amount of tree that's going to be compromised, I think at a minimum, I would add a condition to the approvals to somehow offset the potential loss of that tree. So in general, I am very much in favor of the home, but I don't think you're being realistic about the tree.
All right, thank you. Who's the last one? Commissioner?
Harding. Harding, can you hear me? I lost my video, I think, but can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I like the project, and I'm in favor of it.
All right, thank you. So for me, yeah, I share the same comments with other commissioner. You know, the tree, you know, it's a concern with the second floor being too close right in front of it. Otherwise, the prefab, yeah, I have the same comments. I mean, the quality depends on the builder. So custom home, they can have a bad quality, you know, from the different builder as well. So I am in favor of this project. You know, the composition and different use of materials are very nice and well-composed with the very clean design. So, yeah, that's all we have. Mr. Long, architect, do you still want to talk before we close?
Just, I'll offer just a couple of key bullet points to try to imbue a little bit of confidence. I'm just looking at the ginkgo tree on my photo on my screen here, and maybe we should have provided a little better imagery. I apologize for that. The existing conditions around the tree are such that the tree is really surrounded by existing construction and hardscape. And so we believe the root system is going to bear, you know, will be tolerant to the foundation. Construction will be adjacent. The first limbs of the tree don't really emerge until about 15 to 16 feet off of the ground. And so there's not a lot of limbing that's going to be quite low. And I think that when you look at the tree, the majority of the canopy is at least well over the top plate condition for the building. So there may be a few limbs that we'll be modifying, but I think we're very optimistic that we're going to be able to save this tree. That's been an important part of the project from the beginning. And so we will do a little bit of double-checking with our team to make sure that that's the case and to try to really assure that there's, you know, some preservation here. Modular construction has been my expertise for over 20 years. We've had fantastic experiences building in a very low-impact way. I assure the caller that there is very little cost savings. I wish that was a different statement. Associated with off-site construction, we find this is primarily a process that provides predictability and speed, more so than it does cost savings. The material palette being used for this project is identical to what would be constructed traditionally on-site. That's with regard to code compliance, with structural engineering, with regard to the assemblies themselves in every category. The process is regulated at the state level, which assures local communities that the work is being done in accordance with codes and laws. And there is an inspection process, which is regulated by HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development in Sacramento, which provides an inspection regime to make sure that all of the connections and stuff behind the wall is done according to codes. There are numbers of checks and balances in this process, and we've worked on many homes which were valued in excess of $10 million. We've never found that prefabricating buildings has had a negative effect to property value that we work on or to the surrounding community. So we're thrilled that the city is accepting of what is going to be the future of construction. There are not enough resources in our current community to support the demand. And so off-site construction methods are going to be, you know, part of what we see happening consistently, and we're very happy to be part of leading that charge. So I'll leave it there, but thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Long. Thank you for your explanation about the approval by the state for the prefab. And yes, I would like to, you know, let the neighbor know that the city, the city staff, the building department, and the building department inspector, they have their ways of, you know, reviewing process for the code requirements per the state code and as well as the field inspection to make sure that the construction, the assembly on-site also fulfill the state's building code. Okay, so with that being said, are we ready for a motion?
I'll make it. I motion to approve SC 21-0019 at 253 Francis Drive, subject to the findings and attached conditions in staff report.
Any second?
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna call each commissioner.
Michael, I would like to have a little discussion.
Sure.
My, once again, my only concern is the tree and preservation of the tree. And so I would like to add an additional condition that if the tree in the next five years dies, the applicant must replace with a minimum 48-inch box tree of similar specimen in a location that guarantees the survival of the tree for the existence of the house.
Okay, all right. Should we add that to the condition? I mean, the commissioner Plakas, you want to incorporate that, yeah?
Chair Ma, if you recall, we did have an incident a couple of months.
Yeah, I think we need to talk with the applicant to see if that's doable.
I see.
Just because we were all at City Hall, normally the applicant would come up to the diet and say their comments about, and didn't have that on one particular project. So I think we had all had agreed, moving forward, if petition is added, we try to just ask the applicant, you know, something that's achievable or whatnot.
Okay, yeah, so we'll have the applicant speak on this condition.
Yeah, so first, can you hear me? It's Steve.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'll just say, we love the ginkgo tree. Part of the material palette selection for the house was to complement the beautiful yellow color that it turns in the fall. We want to save the tree. We're willing to move the house a little bit to see that, like, so absolutely, we agree to the condition, we're willing to go further than that, but yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so. Michael, on that note, once again, I encourage them to do whatever they need to do to preserve the tree. So I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be a roadblock, but I'm trying to be a realist. We've seen this too many times where people try to come in and shoehorn projects amongst the trees, and the trees are negatively impacted. So whatever they want to do to make sure the tree survives, I am all for it.
All right, good. So should we get the motion repeated again by incorporating this condition, Commissioner Plakas?
Yeah, recommend approval of the project at 253. Yeah, recommend approval of the project at two five three Francis Drive. Uh, SC twenty-one dash zero zero one nine, subject to the attached findings and conditions with one additional uh condition that uh, Jude, you wanna?
Well, I would say the applicant will work the arbor, get arborist to confirm that the tree will remain uh, as currently, and if the house needs to be moved slightly, or if the tree dies, the applicant agrees to replant a similar tree in a location that guarantees the survival of the tree.
Second, do you have that?
I do. I have that. Thank you.
Okay.
I think I think the other architect, uh, is it Nick or has he wanted to say something? I think I think he was raising his hand.
No, no, no. Um, I work with Toby.
Thanks.
Um, sorry, uh, Commissioner uh Blockus and Kerik. I mean, you, Commissioner Kerik first mentioned by within five years. Do you wanna still add that term for the tree? If the tree die within five years, or you wanna skip the timeline?
Well, I I think if the tree is gonna die, it's gonna die pretty quickly if the roots cut and and whatnot. So whatever timeframe is fine, but you know, five years to me is a reasonable amount of time to to monitor that tree. And I think the the homeowner clearly is in favor of keeping the tree. So uh, I don't think it's gonna be an issue. Whatever timeline uh is appropriate, I'm agreeable to.
Okay. All right.
So Guido, what do you have down for that?
Uh, I have, the motion is to obviously number one approval and to work with the arborist to identify ways to protect the tree. Uh, if the tree dies within the next five years, there'll be a forty-eight inch box tree planted as a replacement in a site that will maintain the viability of the tree in the future.
So stipulated.
All right. Good. Um, any second? All right, I'm gonna, okay. Okay, I'm gonna call each one to vote. Uh, Commissioner Bishop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kerik?
Aye.
Commissioner Harding?
Aye.
Commissioner Blockus?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion approved, five to zero. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Very nice house.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners.
All right, uh, move on to our next um item. City Council Discussion Point. Um, Commissioners and Guido. Uh, are we, are we uh continue um our discussion from last time? Regarding, yeah, the discussion with the city council.
Yeah, we didn't formally agendize it. Um, there was a lot of really good stuff that was brought up. And there's only one of me, so uh, just trying to get a feel for the commission of the eight items that were brought up. What were the top maybe one or two you want me to focus on? And then the others won't drop off. I'm just looking to get some direction from the DRC about what what are, like, for example, the one that I personally feel real strongly about is I really think we should notify the neighborhood sooner. And I really think that we should put the notice of development proposal out in front of a property. Either when the project is being complete or when it's submitted, whatever the DRC thinks is part. I I personally, as a planner, do not think it is, it serves the community well that potentially don't know about a project until ten days before they get a notice. Um, so one of the bullet points, number three, is about maybe making applicants do more community outreach. And that, like I said, that can come in a lot of forms, either a simple notice of development proposal line to making the customers notify the people or having staff do it and the applicant pays for it. More involved, I, San Mateo, I did some consulting for them. They actually made customers have a community. It's a little bit much, but that's for the DRC to decide. Uh, there was that. There was a whole bunch of other really good stuff. I just wanted to get some direction from the DRC.
So, uh, Guido, I I agree with the uh, applicants uh conduct community outreach. But I think part of that, in fact, to me is the same thing, is the definition or two of a neighborhood.
Okay.
I think that is a key thing that comes up every single time.
Okay.
That, you know, someone around the corner, a half a mile away, but on a backstreet, uh constitutes part of the neighborhood. I think is is incorrect. I think neighborhood is what you can see from uh, the middle of the street in front of your house. That's what, how I like to define it.
Okay. And then maybe if each of the commissioners could share what their top one or two items are. So Chairman Mo, if you wanna share what you, your top one or two items are.
You're talking about number one and two, right?
Yeah. And I do, there is another side of stuff, too.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, let's go back to the uh, the uh, point number one and two. Uh, to receive report from the city public information officer, one-story overlay. Yeah, I I believe that uh, we need to figure out a way that, you know, for those um those neighborhood who are pretty sensitive about uh having two-story. I mean, um, you know, over the years, I mean, we should have a kind of feeling that which are the neighborhood. So maybe do a better uh outreach or send a postcard. Or from, I don't know what the city's staff um feel about sending postcard to those neighborhood, you know, which are pretty sensitive about having new two-story house.
Okay.
That telling them that there's a, uh, the city has a way that they they can file a petition, you know, to you know, first, yeah, the neighbor can file petition.
Okay.
So they know, they understand this option. Yeah.
Okay. And uh, Commissioner Blockus?
Yeah, I think the, probably the two biggest are um, you know, defining the neighborhood.
Okay.
Uh, community outreach and then the single-story overlay. I think we're gonna have a real interesting scenario come down the line in regards to three seventy-year of Santa. Uh, if the applicant has walked away from it, a new person has bought it, uh, with the desire to build a two-story and the residents there file for a single-story overlay zone.
Right.
So in effect, we've got, and for lack of a better word, we had a prior builder, owner who wanted to build a two-story, but I think through the process of neighborhood input walked away because it became too much of a hassle. So in effect, potentially neighbors could scare off residents from building what they want and go elsewhere. I'm not saying that this is the case. Um, but this one, I think is gonna be a test case for uh, future projects down the line.
Yeah, yeah, you, the Commissioner Blockus bring a very good point that uh, yeah, we still don't know if that uh that potential, I mean, that the home property owner, it really intention was his original intention to to live in that house, or he got scared away, you know, by by all this neighbor, uh, you know, with the, the, um, you know, all this difficulty to get the uh, the two-story house approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think if you make it clear, and as I think Jude had talked a while back, that, you know, it only becomes important a single-story overlay zone when people are faced with a two-story coming up in their neighborhood. Then they look out and go, oh, shoot, I should have filed for a single-story overlay zone, but I didn't know. And so a better community outreach in regards to that, um, I I think would help eliminate that, but I'm not sure you'll be able to eliminate it fully because I'm sure someone will say, even though they know it, oh, I wasn't aware that that was an option.
Yeah, yeah.
So Guido, I have a question on that.
Yeah.
And that is, this this group, you know, I I met most of the neighbors and know some of them personally. So this project that now has been um, taken away. So if the group were to file today a a single-family overlay, a single-story overlay, would that protect them in the future?
I I believe so, but I would have to confer with the city attorney because even though they withdrew the application, the word in the county code is if there is a completed application. So I would, I would need to confer with the attorney before I give you the final answer.
Cause uh, I think, I think that's a very important thing, particularly for this neighborhood. I know that they considered uh, doing it two years ago when this came up. And I don't know if they actually moved forward.
Yeah, my, I understand that happened before I started working for Los Santos, and I guess they did uh, file, they did. So Commissioner Harding, um, they didn't complete the process, so that that's why the overlay.
Yeah, well, there's also the the factor on this, if the new buyer bought the house with plans and all of that and was basically gonna kind of take over where this one left off with maybe some adjustments for whatever their needs are. Or it's a uh flipper kinda guy who builds, get him max out and and sell it. You just don't know, but I think this, this is gonna come down and set, you know, some sort of precedent, one way or the other.
Right, right. Yeah, because the application is drawn, it it gets a little tricky. So I would have to confer with legal.
Yeah, I think the city attorney needs to figure that one out.
Uh, Commissioner Carrick, did you wanna kinda chime in in terms of what are your top one or two?
Yeah, well, uh, yeah, sure. Uh, one thing that came up tonight, which I didn't mention, was the notification signage for the the project on Francis was on the porch.
Oh, okay.
Tucked on the column. So I think the staff could write a quick little memory diagram saying notices must be X size within ten feet of the property line, prominently displayed, photographed, sent to staff just to confirm proper notification, cause I think a lot of us commissioners drive down the street and, you know, we don't have the address in our uh, Google Maps, so we're looking for that signage. And this is one that I had to, I go, where's the signage? And it was hard to find.
Yeah.
So that's, that's an easy one that you can knock off with a memo.
Okay.
Uh, in terms of the sing, I think the definition of the neighborhood and the single-story overlay go hand in hand.
Okay.
Cause whatever neighborhood that this uh project gets defined, they're still entitled to do a second story. So that's not, in my view, relevant. It's, you know, getting people knowledgeable that they can ask for a single-story overlay to prohibit two-story homes.
Okay.
And then the, my my biggest thing has probably been, in in my experience, the second-story balconies, decks, whatever. So my idea of kind of, you know, allowing people to do that, but maybe offsetting the square footage uh, to the floor area, you know, as a way of, okay, you want a second story or a deck? Then, you know, here, here's the rules. You you, you know, for every square foot you have out there, you are gonna reduce your second story allowable by X amount.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that would help. I mean, we see all kinds of suggestions on balconies and decks. And that would be a way for a designer to say, hey, well, you know, you're not allowed to do that much given the limits on floor area.
Okay.
So that would help, that would help control things and make it less of a subjective interpretation, which we've, we've approved big decks and small decks.
Okay. Sounds good, sounds good.
Yeah, um, uh, I, yeah, I have something about um, uh, Jews uh notes on the balcony. But uh, I I think that should be case by case, because why if they say, uh, you know, the the rear yards has no private issue at all, to say somehow this property doesn't have a rear neighbor or they got a lot of trees. Um, but uh, i- if that's the case, you know, that the same rule, let's say the bonus or penalty related to the balcony, you know, it's, you know, should not be applied to that case. So I don't know. I mean, that that kinda creates different situation, different, different site, different lot, though. That's my concern.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, these are just things that I've seen over the years, so I'm not saying it's right or wrong. But I'm just saying it's something we might consider going forward.
Yeah, the balcony, the balcony, I thi- I think it's it's it's, it's a pretty sensitive everywhere, not just Los Santos, you know. You know, on the hill, Palado, everywhere is the same. So, I mean, it's all down to the the privacy and uh, you know, the the screening and uh, how how we gonna be subjectively, you know, review and determine, you know, where where the balcony is supposed to be appropriate, how big, how big and the location and all that stuff, yeah. It is a tough call. It's a tough call on the balcony. Always been a tough call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Bishop?
Yeah, aye. So I support what the other commissioners have already gone through. I don't need to rehash that. I don't think, the single-story overlay, I think having a way to let more neighborhoods know what's possible. And I don't know if we could do this or not, but simplify the process or bring the cost of the process down or have some faster track way that if neighborhood did wanna get organized to do this, that it wouldn't be as onerous as it might be today. Uh, I know that, I know there is money and so forth involved in it. But uh, may- maybe the outreach should include some type of a streamlined program along that, uh, along those lines. The the rest of the points, I agree with everyone. And if we could come up with a way, cause we do spend a lot of time on these second-story decks and balconies. And we have done different things in different places. That is all, all true. If there was some way to better uh define that and uh, you know, again, make it so it would take up less of our time because it would be to some set of standards, I think would be a reasonable approach there. That's all. Those are my ideas.
Hey, Guido, this is Sam. Again, uh, I noticed on your slide that the heading was the development you commissioned, not the design.
Yeah, I know. I I I caught that after our meeting with council.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Alrighty, well, I heard loud and clear, and I I agree with Commissioner Carrick. Um, as the manager, I have a little bit of discretion, so I could absolutely prepare a memo making customers do the notice of development proposal and make it more prominent. And then the other ones might take a little bit more work on my part, but I at least kinda know the ones that the commission wants to meet. So thank you.
Well, Guido, also on that point, I think if you could go to other commissions or whatever within the city, cause there were some other development stuff that was done, um, where it was a similar thing, where the sign was an eight and a half by eleven attached to uh, like a baseball tee. You know, that you hit the, the tee off of, and it was for a uh flag lot over back behind Rancho.
Oh, okay.
Right, and I was like, wow, you know, cause they were doing And I walked by it, and I was like, wow, you know, cause they were doing a subdivision in a flag lot.
Yeah.
And it just, you know, it was eight and a half by eleven, stated when the discussion was gonna be, board meeting or whatever it was, but uh, you know, I, I would go as far to say as have something like a, you know, a, a three by five, uh, or two by four foot, you know, thing that's substantial, that people can see. Um, similar to when they did the speed bumps on Questa, or, yeah, Questa and Arbolita. Um, they put basically real estate signs out that had, you know, the next meeting on that.
Yeah.
Even.
And that, that's what I'm more used to, when I left East Paul, I can work with the council, create a community outreach policy. We had done the four by six signs staked into the ground, within, I guess it was five, ten feet of the property line, what we did there, but yeah, I'm more more comfortable with that, so people can prominently see the sign and call us and ask questions. So, yeah.
So Guido, I, is it already not in place? I mean, I'm here close to downtown Los Altos, and I see any of these commercial development signs on First Street, or Lyle Street, or
Yeah, like the one on Lyle.
Big signs, you know, why, just, just take those standards and imply, and impose them on the, uh, DRC review projects.
Yeah, and
Exactly.
And that, that's what I would, if, if that's the top prior to the DRC, oh, absolutely, yeah, cause it's, for whatever reason, it wasn't put on the residential, and I've seen it, even in the short time I've been here, it's caused problems for the DRC, so.
And, and the only thing is timing, so when an application comes in, it might be a good idea to say that sign needs to go up sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
So not exactly when it's cleared for the DRC, but well in advance of any, um, you know, formal hearings.
Exactly, exactly. I, I believe
Judy.
And Andrew wanted to ask a question, Chair Moff, is it, is it okay if I?
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead.
Hi, hi, thank you. I just wanted to, um, Guido, maybe we can chat about this further, but I thought I would tell the commission that something we experimented with two years ago, which was having city meetings that were set up by what we call zone. The emergency preparedness has ten zones in the city, and what we did was we had five different meetings in five of those zones. Each of the council members took one of them, and we had presentations during those meetings by each of the departments about things like what's happening, what's coming up in the way of infrastructure, um, in that area in the coming year and so on, but we also talked about development projects. And it occurs to me, Guido, that it, that we're getting ready to start these up again, and I'm actually on tap to do the first one in the southern part of Los Altos. Might be an opportunity for us to talk about a single story overlay.
Oh, sure, yeah, 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 that would be good, yeah, yeah.
And we could, we could build it into the community development department part of the presentation that will be routine for all five of those that are planned for this year.
Perfect, yeah, that's
Yeah.
Yeah, get the word out there, that would be great.
Yeah, that's a good idea, that's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I had, like, the one I did a year and a half ago, I had like ninety people at my meeting. It was a, it was a bunch of folks.
Yeah, uh, council member and Andrew, I will be certainly, I just gave you the dates, and I'll be glad to help. Alright, thanks.
Right, thank you.
Alrighty, well, that's good, that, that's, alright. Uh, up, up on the tab next is, uh, let me show you the memo I keep from the department. Next meeting, April seventh, uh, Steve Golden of sixteen Middlebury Lane, and a very small uh, two eighty five fallen leaf, just getting a second story window for one. The sixteen Middlebury, like, kind of an interesting project, it's on a floodway, so that's got some interesting stuff. And then April twenty first, we've got three, four Blue Oak Lane, that's another few projects. And that's all I have mapped out until, uh, May, I'm, I'm sure things will come on, but those are the next two meetings.
Okay, so, so Guido, you see the, uh, the planning application for a two-story house? Um, still pretty steady, right? The, uh, application, amount of applications still pretty steady?
Yes, I am extremely busy. We are, now, we're uh, and we're actually down two planners, cause Kelly, or Ellie moved back to Colorado, and Kelly's been on maternity early since October. We've been super busy. Yeah, yeah.
And I heard you guys have a, a, a temporary planner or a third planner coming to your help, right?
I got, I got contract authority to hire a part-time, uh, contract planner until Kelly comes back. So.
Okay, alright.
So, so Guido, just one quick question on, uh, when can we go back to hearings in person? Is, is, is the green level? Green would be good, cause it's St. Patrick's Day, but
Yeah, you know, I'll, I'll leave that to the higher ups, I can certainly find out. You know, actually, I did a poll. I emailed all the planning managers and community development directors for the county, so I'm keeping a spreadsheet of all of their responses, and I, I've gotten responses of everything from, we haven't really even thought about it, to yeah, we're gonna do a hybrid of people coming back to work, and then still working at home, and I think everybody's just still trying to figure it out, so.
Yeah, wait till we get all the shots, right? Everybody get these shots.
Yeah, hopefully that's sooner. I, I just think the process goes smoother when you do this in person. Cause a lot gets lost over Zoom, and I don't think the applicant is given, you know, a fair shot here in this format, so.
But I, I would say that, uh, we've had community meetings for different projects, um, and even on these calls, we have gotten different, you know, wider spectrum of the community, cause people who have kids, or maybe people who can't come to city hall, they're able to just jump on the call, so it'll probably be, you know, some mix of hybrid, virtual, and in-person, we'll have to figure that out, so.
Okay. Alright. So I guess that's it for, that's a nice meeting.
Yeah.
I will, um, have a meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Guido, can you stay on for just a second?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Alright, okay, bye.
Goodnight.
I just wanted to thank you and Sean for jumping on that complaint from the folks who were at one of the DRC meetings a few months ago about that second story window.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was just so bizarre that, that, you know, we discussed it, and you guys discussed it, and the neighbor talked about it, and you very clearly said no, and then the next thing we know, we get a, a thing back from those two, those nice, remember that nice little couple? Do you remember them?
Yeah, yeah.
And when I got the email, I'm kind of like, holy shit.
Yeah. I, I, you know, honest